All right, I think we should get started because I was a chatty Cathy and we're already two minutes late. So I am going to call the Tuesday, August 18th Common Council Meeting to order. Alyssa, will you please call the role?
Pash.
Here.
Went.
Here.
Bartsch.
Here.
Holt House.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Wessel.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Very good, thank you. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, before I do the minutes, I do want to make sure that we have an accurate recording of everyone that's here. So if you, I see two callers, I'm assuming one is Randy Franks, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. And then is the other caller Jacob Moss? Nope, okay. Who is the other person on the line?
Lisa Schwartz.
Oh, thank you, okay. Lisa Schwartz. All right. The next item then is the minutes of the council meeting from August 4th. Any comments or corrections on any of those minutes? All right. Next is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Chief, is there anything in that box? Just hand it to Alyssa, please. Can you tell me the name?
Jerry Bauer.
Jerry Bauer. If you would please come to the microphone. And just state your name and address.
My name is Jerry Bauer and my address is 201 South Water Street here in Watertown. And... Do I voice my concern now?
Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, none of this before. My concern is with the live music that plays at the new establishment on weekends at the new bar across the street. It's, I don't know how many other neighbors are affected by it, but a lot of people in our apartment complex are very affected by it. We have to keep our windows and patio doors closed all the time. And even after, even with the windows and patio doors closed, the music is so loud, it comes right through and we have to turn our TVs and radios and stuff like, up like that and they're going past, apparently it's 11 o'clock that they can play till. It's going past that hour and we've had to call the police department on many occasions to have them call and have them stop playing the music after 11 o'clock because it's keeping us awake after midnight. Sometimes we can hear the music inside the bar playing so loud that it's, you can hear it on the outside and you can still hear it in the apartment building, which is less than 100 feet from across where the bar's playing the music. And it's disturbing my sleep. I haven't had a good night's sleep on a weekend since they opened that up and started playing outside. And I don't know what the issue, permit issues are, policy is, but that place on the outside was never a dance floor on the outside. It used to be a lumberyard, it used to be a restaurant where no music was played. It was a restaurant for people to go sit there and eat and enjoy and stuff like that. And then another person came in and bought it, took it over and it was still a restaurant. When it turned into somebody getting a permit to play live music, I don't know how it works with a permit. I thought you needed to ask residents in the area if we had a problem that bothered us because we definitely wouldn't have said yes. It's, like I said, within 100 feet of our apartments, there's 15 apartments that have patio doors and windows facing that bar. Mine is directly across from that patio, the backyard where that stage is set up. And it bothers me medically, the medical conditions, and I'm on sleeping medication and I'm still affected by it. And I haven't had any sleep in weeks since they opened it up, so I'd like it to stop. I don't know if there's some kind of physician or something like that to go around the neighborhood and get it signed by other people. I don't know if other people have called the police department and complained about the loud music, but I will continue, call the police department and complain with the loud music because it's affecting me until they close it down or something or stop playing the live music because I can't say that anymore.
I think what we'll do is we have your name and address and I'll just ask the clerk to get that to Jacob Moss. So Jane Ellen, just give Jacob a heads up and we'll just ask Jacob and then Chief Kaminsky, you guys, you and Jacob can connect and can provide a response and feedback to Jerry. Does that work?
Yeah. Jacob and I have any contact about it and I know that you've called.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem anybody coming, more than welcome to come up into my apartment at that time of the night and you guys can listen to it.
But we will, we'll work.
We're aware.
Yep, we'll work on, we'll connect internally tomorrow and then we'll have someone get back in touch with you.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? All right, we have three public hearings tonight. The first is to rezone 615 Jones Street from TR 6 to Family Residential to CB Central Business District. I will call that public hearing to order. If anyone wishes to comment, please step forward to the microphone. Seeing none, I will close that public hearing and that will go back to the planning commission. Next is a public hearing to amend Chapter 550 of the zoning code through creation of Section 550-81C driveway setback adjustment. I'll call the public hearing to order. Anyone wishing to comment on that one can step up to the microphone. Okay, I will close that public hearing and that will also go back to the planning commission. And then last is to amend Chapter 550 of the zoning code through creation of Section 550-152B, Print 2, Print F, Flexible Development Standards Drainage Way Overlay District. Anyone wishing to comment on that one can step up to the microphone. Okay, and that, I will close that public hearing and that will go back to the planning commission as well. Next is committee reports. We have the committee, excuse me, the Finance Committee of August 10th, Plan Commission of August 10th, Public Works of August 11th. Any comments on any of those minutes? Very good. We have no old business and then before we get into communications and recommendations or as we do, I want to let you know that there is no COVID update simply because it was erroneously omitted from the agenda. So if you have any questions that you're curious on, just shoot me an email. Otherwise, we have made an agenda formatting correction and it will be on the agenda now every month. So no reason there other than that we just simply missed noticing it. Okay, so next is appointments. We have one appointment for your consideration to the Watertown Housing Authority for Mr. Robert Stacks. Is your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Robert Stacks to the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Motion by Witten.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pash. Any comments on that one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is employee recognition and we have quite a list because we haven't done them for a few months just with trying to limit crowds in the room. There are a few here this evening that we will present in person, but I do want to be sure to list all of those who were not able to attend. So there's Sally Voss at the library, 15 years, Caitlin Orshak at the police department for five years, Scott Theater at the street department for 30 years, Jeff Malloy, police department, 25 years. Someone please tell him I'm disappointed. He goes to every other recognition besides this one. Terri Schultz at the water department for 20 years, Dawn Learned, who I do not see online, at the police department for 10 years, Randy Franks at the street department for five, Minnie Bushardt at the police department for five, and Dennis Quest with Building Safety and Zoning for five. So we are very thankful to all of them for their service. And then we have a few this evening in person. I'm going to have Jordan go first because he's standing here in the room. So Jordan, if you want to come up. Put it as straight up as you can to the microphone. And I will get you. And then do you mind stepping a little bit that way so I can take my mouth off? Just so people can hear me a little bit better. So Karen is on vacation, but she sent, this might be the longest one I've ever gotten to read, so I'm going to try to do my best. And she, Karen, who is our cable director, writes, "Jordan is a complete rock star and I mean that literatively, literally and figuratively. He is a videographer, editor, musician, tech whiz, and the right-hand man. Jordan can turn on a common council meeting, a common council meeting into a work of art. The city of Watertown is fortunate to have an engaged and dedicated employee who grew up in the community he serves. Jordan was working here before Karen started, so she can't take credit for hiring him. He actually hired her and for that she's truly grateful. She says, 'Thank you, Jordan.' Before you all leave the meeting tonight, stop by the new Watertown TV con-" I should have read this before. Stop by the new Watertown TV control room across the hall and thank Jordan for his five years of service, but I brought him in the room." And I'll just say, we have obviously had quite a few hurdles to overcome technologically as we work through all of this and I have called Jordan on his days off, on his evenings off, and never once has he told me, "I'm off." So I appreciate you so much and Jordan has been a very willing participant in getting the website up to speed. So if you're a fan of our new website, Jordan is largely to thank for that. So we're incredibly thankful to have you here at the city and thank you for working for us for five years and hopefully many more. Please join me congratulating Jordan. All right, Chief Kaminsky, would you like to come up? Any others? And my notes on how to pronounce your last name appropriately are on my desk, so I'm going to say.
I'm shy.
I'm shy. Thank you. Let's see what I have here. Actually, Chief, do you want to read it? Well.
Okay, so good.
I didn't think you'd get that.
Oh, you're a boss.
Then I will read it. Amber is a dedicated, hard-working employee with 15 years of experience at the Watertown Police Department. She has mastered many roles. This was one of the first things I learned about you, actually, is that you're a jack-of-all-trades. She has served as a dispatcher and then a community service officer. Having been short-staffed multiple times in dispatch, Amber has had to essentially do two jobs at once. Filling in as a full-time dispatcher while also trying to maintain her duties as a CSO. Amber has done this without complaint and her work ethic has not gone unnoticed. She brings a positive energy to work every day that employees have come to love. We thank Amber for her dedicated service and I thank you for always being a smiling face when I walk in the police department and can't get in. So thank you so much. And thank you for your commitment to our community for the last 15 years. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
You know, I appreciate you. At one time I was your boss.
Yep.
Now you don't, but I do appreciate you and all the things and your flexibility and willing to do anything I can ask for you.
Thank you.
Is your husband going to take a picture?
Are you going to take a picture, honey?
Can you bring a camera?
He did.
Donald. Not Donald. Just a normal picture.
I have a picture, yeah.
Jill used to babysit for me too, by the way.
John, Chief Beethold, if you'd like to. John Beethold has been with the Watertown Fire Department since June 2000 and serves in the roles as firefighter and paramedic and at times as the acting chief commander. John has also taken on the role as one of the fire investigators for the fire department and has training at the National Fire Academy in Emmersburg, Maryland for this discipline. John has also completed a bachelor of science for emergency services administration through Columbia Southern University and has been issued the life-saving medal five times in his career and a unit citation medal for the tire recycling fire. And I'll just say that when there's fires in the city, I, after the fire is out, come and see how everything is and feel like I have a purpose, but apparently it's a good thing, so I keep doing it. And John was one of the people right away that explained to me on my first fire what they were doing and what was happening and what the inspection process was after the fact and I really appreciated that. I think something that I always like to have is that kind of feeling of wanting to be brought into the loop and I got that from you right away. Anytime we have people that have worked for us for as long as you have, we know that we're lucky to have you. So thank you very much. I don't know if I want to add anything, what ways you could go.
Just certificate him.
No, we really appreciate what John has been doing. He's also a mentor on the shifts as well. We have a lot of people coming in because they're helping anything with PMS and fire and we appreciate that. He's actually one of our fire investigators. That's a big thing for us as well. Thankfully we don't have a lot of large fires that we want to do. We always need to find out what is going to happen. John, appreciate you. Thank you for all the service you've had this year at Watertown.
And then our last one for this evening, and first one is Chief Beethold. And in true Craig fashion, he has provided me talking points. He always prepares me and when I first came, one of the first people to really come to me and explain, you know, kind of the inner workings of the team was Craig. So I appreciate him for his honesty and his sense of organizational community very much, but to Craig's talking points. No, Craig has been in the fire service for 27 years. He started in 1993 as a paid-on-call member here with the Watertown Fire Department and then went to Kokona and obviously came back and thankfully came back. He has a bachelor's in fire science from Columbia Southern University, an executive fire officer from the NFA, and is a certified emergency manager from FEMA. So not only does Craig serve as our fire chief, but he's also the city's emergency manager and just in the time that I've been on the council and that in this capacity we've had, once we've had our fires, we've had big storms, we've had a pandemic, and to have Craig provide the facilitation and the communication that he does and the guidance that he does is really something that I value very, very much. We would be very, very lost without Craig in a lot of situations and he's very calm and very practiced and that's something that I very much appreciate. I say this to a lot of our public service families. I can't imagine being in their shoes and I can't imagine being a family member of people in their shoes and I appreciate them very much and Craig is definitely at the top of that list. So Craig, 20 years. How about 20 more? There you go. Thank you so much. All right. Let me just get through my stack of Amelia papers. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We appreciate it very much. Let's go on to the accounts payable. Is there a motion on the accounts?
I'll motion to pay all accounts.
Thank you. Motion by Wessel. Seconded by Holt House. Any questions on these? Alyssa.
Aye.
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 Upstand.
Bartsch.
Aye.
Holt House.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
All right, next is reports and miscellaneous business. We have the Historic Preservation and Downtown Design Commission of July 15th, the Licensing Board of August 12th, Main Street Program from July 21st, payroll summaries of July 1st to 14th and 15th to 28th, and the Police and Fire Commission Minutes from July 13th and 29th. Are there's any comments or questions on any of those minutes? All right, very good. License. We have one license this evening. This is a premises amendment request for Uptown of Watertown doing business as the Uptown of Watertown at 416 East Main. This is to add fenced-in outdoor patio and tables. Is there a motion on this one? Motion by Went.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Witten. Questions? Mr. Pash.
Mayor, of course, in light of other discussions that occurred this evening and understanding the scope of this request, I guess I have misinformation in conversations with Jacob about the timelines and what the limitations are. So are we amending the, you know, on here at State's from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM on the day of the event? And I was under the impression they only had a four-hour window between noon and eight for live music.
I think you're speaking to our next ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm on just the premises amendment for Uptown, so this is just them amending their licensed premise so people.
Okay, that's leading into that. Forgive me, I got ahead of myself.
Permitting people to have alcoholic beverages on the patio.
Well, and I guess that ties in then.
It does.
Yeah, that question then would be, because I was also under the impression that the alcohol cannot be consumed after 9:00 PM on a patio.
Chief?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
And the music has to, I believe, stop at 8:00 PM under the condition of use permit.
Okay.
Eight or, don't quote me Tom, but it's either eight or nine.
Oh, eight or nine.
For the music.
So that's what we're approving here is the applicant understands those restrictions for alcoholic establishment like that at 9:00 o'clock seems.
Gross.
The premise amendment under licenses is only so that the Uptown can have patrons with alcohol in the outdoor patio area. It's not, this isn't about, that's just so they can have alcohol. Otherwise, they would be carrying alcohol out to an unlicensed area which they could be cited for. So it's just about alcohol. That part is.
This particular item is just, it's not about music, it's not about fencing, it's.
So when do we address the timelines that they're allowed to consume that alcohol? Would that be a difference?
Well, right, what, the next item that we'll get to on the second reading is essentially allowing people who have indoor commercial entertainment, which I presume the bar does, Uptown, to also then do that activity outside and then that would, that would be held to the standards and times that are listed in this new ordinance.
So, all the person, Pash, I think it's essentially saying that's an extension of their alcohol area that they can have alcohol in. It's just like saying, otherwise, if someone is consuming alcohol on the patio, the PD could cite them.
Well, I think that's my confusion is whether it's a entertainment, if it's a restaurant with a dining, with a patio dining area versus something else. Are we talking about something else here or is it the equivalent of any restaurant that has an outdoor patio that they're, that they serve alcohol?
So with this one, what he's doing is he's putting on a deck and this will be a deck where people will be able to, there's, he's putting tables, chairs, he'll have waitress service, waiter service, so he'll have food and alcohol service on the patio.
Okay.
There's no access, at this point, we're not allowing access to the patio from the parking lot. You have to go through the restaurant to go out onto the patio to consume alcohol or food.
That helps.
Good questions. Any others? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. All right, so then the next is, our ordinance is, the first is ordinance 20-19. This is to amend Chapter 550 of the zoning code through creation of Section 550-56A B, outdoor commercial entertainment incidental to indoor commercial entertainment. This is here for me and the planning commission on the second reading. Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pash. Your second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Witten. Comments or questions?
So not to share too much from my seat, but my other concern is just the precedents we're setting. So as we get into these situations and we anticipate more of this, I mean, it's, I guess then to revisit my earlier question, commercial entertainment should only operate between the hours of 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So are we clear that that is the window of operation that they have until 10:00 PM to have commercial entertainment?
And I'm not sure on this one because I've had discussions with Jacob about conditional use permits.
Yes.
And that's where.
So this, this ordinance would take the place of the conditional use permit. So I was going to clarify. Your understanding is accurate and to my understanding as well. This would essentially make it so that those applicants or those owner, or businesses already do not have to get a conditional use permit to operate outside. What we were seeing as a planning commission is we were, people were operating a business. Given everything that was going on with COVID, we'd rather have people be outdoors. So we talked about offering them to take their business that they have indoors and move it outdoors within these parameters without going through the conditional use permit process, which is a fee, a public hearing, two meetings. So we found ourselves, I'm not going to speak forever, but recently we found ourselves approving these so frequently that we just thought, allow them to do the use they have the permission for inside, outside. However, there are, obviously, you'll see E is must comply with the noise standards. We did get complaints about what the constituent discussed earlier and we have taken, had discussions internally, which is what we'll share with you tomorrow, and we'll just start going down that process. So if someone isn't compliant with these requirements, they're. So if someone isn't compliant with these requirements, there is recourse for us on, they can lose points, they can get, we can go back to the planning commission, and they can remove their ability to do this activity, so.
My question is, with the conditional use permit, the timeframe that was given for, say, a band to be outside was from whatever time that was specified in the conditional use permit until, I believe, 8:00 at night, but the band could only play a maximum of four hours in that timeframe?
So that's what you were referencing?
That's what I was going into.
Because I thought that's the conditions that were put on through the conditional use permit was that it was four hours.
And that could have been. This would make it so that you do not need a cup anymore. So you're, you could be very right. I'm just saying this ordinance, if it passes, would make it so that if you have indoor commercial entertainment, what Jacob always says is by right. So now, by right, you could also have it outside, before you'd have to come for permission to have it outside. Does that make sense? And Jane Ellen, I don't know if you're, I don't want to put you on the spot, because I know you're not Jacob. So if you're not, if you have anything to add, please pipe up. I'm going to go to Alderperson Kelps.
So currently, it allows them to play outside until 11:00, and with this, it'll change it to 10:00?
No, currently, you would apply for a conditional use permit, and in that permit, it's at the purview of the planning commission to place parameters such as 9:00 PM. Not having, well, we do have some ordinances about lights, but they could make it more restrictive than what our ordinances allow for right now.
So what you're saying, this will supersede a conditional use permit?
This would make it so that if I have an indoor commercial entertainment activity now, and I wanted to go outside, I would not have to get a conditional use permit. I would be allowed, if this ordinance passes, by right, to just take my indoor commercial entertainment and put it on my patio, within these parameters. And there is a way to measure noise. I was asking about it. There is a machine we have, and we go out at the time, and we do it. So there is recourse for those folks that have difficulty complying. And the chief, you guys have noise standards, even, is it nuisance?
We don't have anything to measure noise.
Not volume, but the, so building safety and zoning has a capacity to measure. And I think the PD has a citation that allows them to essentially, is it disturbance, or?
There's a, so building safety and zoning has a decibel meter. It's out for calibration right now. It has to be calibrated yearly. And the police department has a noise ordinance that they do pretty regularly issue citations on. However, it's not to a decibel standard, it's based on a reasonable person standard, which, as you may imagine, is a little bit more broad than decibels. So that's, that's the enforcement area.
Other questions?
My final thought, I mean, I appreciate the progress, that the initiative and what the intent is, knowing that your earlier comment that we have recourse. As long as we have clear and concise recourse to come back and readdress this if it becomes a problem, then I appreciate wanting to let businesses try to expand their operation. Hopefully, the business owners clearly understand that this is going to be monitored closely. Expectations will be high.
Chapter 220, that's where I'm getting the four hours from. So in this ordinance, it says businesses which intend to serve alcohol beverages must comply with Chapter 220 of the City of Watertown Municipal Code and must satisfy the requirement slash conditions of the license for that premises. In Chapter 220-19, it states no live performance of, or reproduction of a concert, music, or sporting event video television program, blah, 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 shall be displayed on the exterior of the licensed premises or in the outside sales area other than between a continuous block of not more than four hours, between the hours of noon and 8:00 PM.
So 220 is the clerk's code, correct?
Yes.
And that would apply to this?
Correct. So that's, even though you're saying in here, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM on any day, check, if they have to comply with 220, they couldn't have, say, live music except between the hours of noon and 8:00 PM. And then it can only be for a longest block continuous of four hours.
So live entertainment for, say, the bar would have to end at 8:00 PM per, per Chapter 220?
Per 220, correct. So they couldn't do an all-day music event. It would have to be for no more than four hours between noon and 8:00 PM.
Okay. And then the other question is, is it per band, or is it music?
It just says.
Okay. I'm just curious.
So if it's a concert, I'm assuming it's just one concert, four hours continuous. If you want to put a band up there for one hour each for four, you know, to make it four hours, you could.
That's what I'm saying. Is it four hours total, or is it per band? So if somebody comes in a band at noon, and then another one at four, that's not acceptable?
Right.
Jane Ellen, do you have anything to add? No. Mr. Beethel.
I think it's, it's all been spoken to.
Okay. You don't have a mic, so please talk loud. It's okay, just talk loud.
The only thing else I'd add to is, my thing is, where they're doing outdoor entertainment is making sure that if it's fenced in, and that there isn't a way for them to exit safely. So I would almost ask that if used in outdoor, type, NFA, on fire code.
Under B?
For the amendment you're looking for and compliant with the NFPA?
Yes.
Or is that sufficient?
As long as, yeah, B is, it can, I like where it states about this where footage, but it also can apply to NFPA.
Given the, I'm stating subjective facts, given the amount of questions that there are in this, we can vote. We can also table to the next meeting, if that would be your choice. I presume Mr. Mouse would be available for that one. He was just out of the area today. We can shore up some of these timing questions. Just putting that out there. We can also vote. So, Mr. Schmidt.
Could I make a motion to table it so we can address some of these issues, so allow Jacob to be here to clarify some points of confusion or misinformation?
To the next meeting?
Yes.
I'll second.
So there's a motion to table until the next meeting by Schmidt, seconded by Pash. It's not a debatable motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. So we will, Jane Ellen, can you ask Jacob to circle up the troops on that one, please? And then, just for practicality purposes, the second, the second ordinance, which is ordinance 20-20, to amend Chapter 550 of the zoning code through creation of Section 550-34C, print one, print N, accessory land uses permitted by right, is essentially the same thing.
So I'll make that motion to table it to go with the other one.
Thank you. Motion to table until the next meeting.
I'll second.
Schmidt, seconded by Kelps. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. Thank you for the good questions, everybody. Let's go on to resolutions, then. Our first, I need to unmute our HR person. I muted her earlier. Our first is Exhibit 9064. This is a resolution to enter into a contract with Rebound LLC for use of the network of medical service providers to manage the treatment of workplace injuries. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Exhibit 9064.
Motion by Ritten. Seconded by Barts. Any questions? Alyssa. Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wend?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9065. This is a resolution to revise the curb cut permit fee. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion by Holt House. Seconded by Pash. Any questions on this one? Mr. Schmidt.
So to clarify, we're charging a permit application fee for either us, this is city, or the individual to make curb repairs by cutting them and fixing them? Is that the intent of this, as I read it?
Jane Ellen?
The curb cut permit is for openings in driveways and/or sump pump openings behind the curb. And so the amendment is that there would be a mandatory $100 administration fee, and then the applicant has the choice to use their own contractor to create the curb cuts at no cost, or to use the city staff, city crews, to create the curb cut at a cost of $200.
Okay, so essentially, this is going to be more towards, like, new construction or a major renovation of an existing construction?
Correct.
And this is an existing fee, it's just adjusting that, correct?
Correct.
What's?
Has not been updated since 1997.
Jane Ellen, what is the existing fee?
I believe it is 35 for a sump pump and 55 for a driveway.
They did do a cost, essentially a cost analysis to get to this number, I believe. This went through Public Works, right?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know a ton of the details. Is that correct?
It did, yes.
I got a little bit to this, I think we talked about it at Finance Committee also. It's a nice service for the city to provide, cutting curb cuts for residents. They do a couple dozen a year. And the cost of the blades is pretty substantial. So this will help offset and just about negate the cost of blades every year at the prices that we set these fees. That's what we discussed at Finance Committee.
Okay, so I'm just, so that makes sense when it goes to our costs to actually do the physical work. But the administration fee, we consolidated it from two, $2 figures to one, but we're still significantly over that number, combining it to two. Is our administrative cost that high on these?
Jane Ellen, can you speak to that, please?
Yes, we, we looked at the costs of, this is rather intense in that it takes a lot of staff time to not only take and process the application, but there are multiple field inspections that go along with this also. And we have to mark them out, and if they mark it out, we have to go out and check it. Then it gets approved to be cut, and then after it, we have to check, make sure that the distances that are allowable by our code are adhered to. And then, once it's cut, we go out and inspect it again to make sure that it was adhered to. So it is rather labor-intensive as our permits go.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like a very unfortunately inefficient process to go with the checks and the rechecks and the double checks. Okay.
Additional questions? Alyssa. Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wend?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9066. This is a resolution to approve the fire and EMS coverage contract with the townships of Emmett, Shields, Milford, and the Town of Watertown. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Make a motion to approve Exhibit 9066.
Motion by Pash, seconded by Ritten.
Second.
Mr. Pash, you must assume when I went like this to Alderman Ritten that I was looking at you. Questions for the chief on this one? Because I'm not answering them. I'm just kidding.
Chief, I'm just assuming this is a redo of what we had before with them, just a continuous contract we've had, or just updating what we already had with them.
Yeah, what we do is we, I think, that's how long, that's the time between 26 and 27.
For a long time.
Coverage with them, this is a, of another contract for the service.
Okay. I get to ask questions on all these renewed contracts. I just want to make sure it's just an ongoing process, it's something we did last year, just to keep that information.
See, the only difference is here is we're doing it for a two-year period, for the first time, so that we don't keep going back for the same thing. Any other questions for the chief? Alyssa. Pash?
Aye.
Wend?
Aye.
Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
All right. Next is Exhibit 9067. This is a resolution to approve an MOU with the Watertown Main Street Program. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Make a motion to approve Exhibit 9067.
Motion by Pash. Seconded by Wagner. Questions or comments? Alyssa. Pash?
Aye.
Wend? Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
No.
Next is Exhibit 9068. This is a resolution authorizing the City of Watertown to apply for the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Recycling Grant. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
A motion for 9068.
Motion by Wetzel.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Wagner. Any questions? Randy is on the line, if you have any. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Very good. Next is Exhibit 9069. This is a resolution to approve Change Order Number 3 for the 2020 Betumina Servicing Project with Wolf Paving. This is here from Alderman Pash and Public Works.
I'll move to approve Exhibit 9069.
Thank you. Motion by Ritten.
Second.
Seconded by Barts. Questions? Alyssa. Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wend?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9070. This is a resolution approving the subdivision development agreement for public improvements in the Plattehead Heights, Phase 3 subdivision in the City of Watertown Jefferson County, between Greymar LLC and the City of Watertown. This is here from me.
I'll move to approve Exhibit 9070.
Motion by Ritten, seconded by Wetzel. Questions? Mr. Ritten?
I just want to say, this is something good. Good to see some, some gross. I haven't seen one of these in my year and a half on the council, so I'm happy to see this.
Corey is here from Greymar, if anyone has any questions. Should have moved you up on the agenda, sorry, Corey. I kept, like, reading them to see, like, how much further is it?
Mayor, I think I know the answer, but the homes, I assume, will be comparable to the same size and demographics of.
Yeah, they're an identical product to what is already currently being built in Heppites.
Great. Exciting.
Mr. Barts, did you have something or no?
Sorry.
Oh, I thought I saw you.
I did have a question. Maybe the attorney could answer this. There is a lot of legalese in here, and I had a hard time reading through it. So the developer is responsible for constructing the infrastructure, sewer water, stuff like that? Or is that something that the city's going to do?
The public improvements are developers' funded.
Okay. And then, as far as surety, as how they're going to be constructed to the city specs, how does that handle?
We go back on this one.
I'm sorry? What?
Inspections, right?
Yes, yes.
So city staff has people that go out and watch?
I'm going to segue to Jane Ellen, because I know she's going to want to answer this question.
Our subdivision code allows for us to hire out the inspection, and then those fees are charged back to the developer if and when we have the staffing amounts and/or the time to do them. We do do them, but otherwise, they'll be hired out. We've been fortunate enough that with the Grandview Heights, we had the ability to do most of the inspections, and so we did them internally. But we either do them internally, or we hire them out and charge the fees back to the developer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alyssa. Ritten?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Holt House?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Kelps?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Wend? Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9071.